I'll now call this meeting of the Jacksonville City Council to order. I want to welcome everyone who is in attendance tonight and also those who'll be viewing the meeting on G-10 television. And to begin with, we're going to have our pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Randy Thomas, followed by the invocation by John Carter, our city attorney. Please rise.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me pause to give you thanks. To give you thanks for this beautiful day, to give you thanks for the blessings you so graciously bestowed upon us individually and as the city of Jacksonville. We especially remember tonight those that have been so hard hit by natural disasters, from the floods in Houston to the devastating earthquakes in Japan and Uruguay, the loss of life and to the injuries. We pray for all those affected and for all those who are helping in this time of tragedy. We pray for our service members who are serving us here and around the world, with their anxious families, that you keep them safe and be with them. And as always, be with our mayor and with our council as they deliberate our citizens' business. We ask all this in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Please be seated. Counsel, entertain a motion to adopt an agenda for tonight's meeting.
Move approval.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda is adopted. I have a few presentations to make tonight. And the first, I'd like to do a presentation for National Association of Letter Carriers' Food Drive Day. I think Dan Bornhardt is here as the Vice President of the United Way and Craig King of the United States Postal Service. On behalf of the National Association of Letter Carriers, the United Way of Onslow County has requested a proclamation naming Saturday, May 14th, 2016, as Letter Carrier's Food Drive Day in the city of Jacksonville. And I'll read this proclamation at this time. Whereas, May 14th, 2016 marks the 24th Annual National Association of Letter Carriers, NALC, Food Drive to help stamp out hunger, which is one of the largest food drives in the nation involving 1,400 NALC branches throughout the country. And whereas, with hunger impacting more than 49 million Americans, including working families, children, and the elderly, health is needed now more than ever before. And whereas, once again, the public is encouraged to join in this campaign by placing non-perishable food items near their mailboxes on May 14th to be picked up by their letter carriers. And whereas, it is fitting for our citizens to support this annual food drive, this annual drive involving cities and towns in all 50 states and jurisdictions of the United States. All food that is locally donated will be distributed to the food banks in our community. And whereas, United Way of Onslow County will help letter carriers distribute the food collected to local food banks and pantries in the community, including Onslow Community Outreach Soup Kitchen, the Salvation Army, Second Chance Mission of Hope, Oslo Women's Center, Friends of the Aging, Faith Outreach Holy Ministries, and Armed Services YMCA. Now therefore, I, Sammy Phillips, the Mayor of the city of Jacksonville, do hereby proudly proclaim May 14th, 2016, as National Association of Letter Carriers Food Drive Day in the city of Jacksonville, and I encourage all residents to donate non-perishable food items to help our local food banks and pantries assist those in need. I want to thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you so much. Would you like to say a few words? Thank you. Yeah, I'd just like to say thank you to everyone. Thank you to the community of Jacksonville here in the city and all our citizens throughout the county. Onslow County and Jacksonville, the city of Jacksonville, are known and great at rising up to the occasion to help each other and help a neighbor, and this is just another example of that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Everybody got that day right? The 14th. Danny Bryan, who's our inspections administrator, if you'd join me up front here. We're gonna do a presentation of Building Safety Month. The city of Jacksonville is proud to recognize the critical role played by our building and code inspectors for their continued commitment to our community by proclaiming the month of May 2016 as Building Safety Month in the city of Jacksonville. And I do have a proclamation to read, and if you'll bear with me for a moment. I'm gonna put my specs on this time. I think I see a little better. Whereas, Building Safety Month is a public awareness campaign to help individual families, individuals, families, and businesses understand what it takes to create safe and sustainable structures where we live, work, and play. And whereas, for the last 36 years, we have celebrated advances in constructing impervious, viable, affordable, and resilient buildings and homes. And whereas, the Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown guardians of public safety, our local code officials, who work day in and day out to keep the public safe. And whereas, building codes, driving growth through innovation, resilience, and safety, the theme for Building Safety Month 2016 encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of building safety and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, water safety and conservation, energy efficiency, and new technologies in the construction industry. And whereas, each year, in observance of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to celebrate all aspects of building safety and sustainability at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, I, Sammy Phillips, Mayor of the city of Jacksonville, do hereby proudly proclaim the month of May 2016 as Building Safety Month in the city of Jacksonville, and I encourage our citizens to learn more about how they can contribute to building safety at home and in our community by contacting the Jacksonville Developmental Services Planning and Permitting and Inspections Division. Danny, I'm gonna present this to you. Would you like to say a word or two?
Well, on behalf of the Development Services Department and the inspectors received this, and we thank you all.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you very much.
Next, I would like to call up some members of our police department, starting with Public Safety Director Mike Canaro, Captain Ashley Weaver, and Lieutenant Stacy Lible. And you have anybody else with you? The National Association of Town Watch awards communities for outstanding participation and achievements in their annual national night out, America's Night Out Against Crime. This is a campaign that we do every year annually here. We've done it for how many years? Eighteen years. The National Association of Town Watch has selected the city of Jacksonville as a national award winner for our 2015 National Night Out held on August 4, 2015. This is the seventh consecutive National Night Out Award for Jacksonville. The 2015 National Night Out, held at the Riverwalk Park in the downtown area, hosted over 10,000 people and was a resounding success. And without your efforts and your dedication to make this a grand community event, it would not have been possible. We thank you so much for your guidance and your planning on this particular event here, the event in Jacksonville. Thank you, Ashley. Do you have a designated speaker?
I think Captain Weaver was gonna speak.
Okay.
I just found that out. So Lieutenant Lible will be heading up our national night out for 2016. The plans are already in place. She's done a wonderful job getting everything together, and this year, the event will be on August 2nd. And we will still have our running with the law on the Saturday before, which is July 30th. And we encourage everybody that wants to participate to come out both for the run, which all proceeds from the run actually go to Special Olympics. We do a donation to them. And do you have anything that you would like to say?
Thank you, Ashley. Very eloquent. Thank you very much for what you do. I was trying to get it out more clearly, but that is the grand event in Jacksonville annually. And if you haven't been, what's the date on the next one? August 2nd? Tuesday, August 2nd, first Tuesday in August. It's a great event, and if you haven't been, those of you that are watching televised meeting here, good one to go to. Next, I would like to call up Ms. Gail Maids, the Finance Director, and any of the staff that you have present. I see you have quite a few. Come on.
They may be coming. So they're here.
Well, they should claim some of the effort, shouldn't they?
That's exactly right.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for the job that you do, by the way. The mayor and city manager recently received notification that the city of Jacksonville and its finance department have been awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting by the Government Finance Officers Association for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2015. The Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting is the highest level of recognition given in the area of governmental accounting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a local government and finance department. This is the 25th consecutive year that the city of Jacksonville has received this recognition. The city would like to recognize the hard work and dedication of our finance department for this outstanding achievement. Thank you very much for what you do. And this is the... Another one to hang on the wall.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Ella? Thank you. I know she loves to speak, do a lot of public speaking. Should've gave her more time, shouldn't I? Next presentation, the final presentation for the evening, is to recognize Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. And I've got a bunch of telecommunications here, and I'm gonna ask Ms. Charlotte Roden, who's the supervisor of our telecommunications communications division, if you would come up with some of your folks there? Public safety telecommunications play an important role in today's workforce. These telecommunications serve as the frontline public safety ambassadors to citizens in times of emergency or stressful situations. And I'll tell you what, they have a very unenviable job at times. They do, they have periods where they're busy, 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 don't you? I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna tell you the story about when I started on the police department in 1974, when police officers actually had to be the telecommunications, had to answer the phone, greet traffic coming in. So they, the city has grown, and so has the responsibilities entailed in this job. I got a proclamation here I would like to read, if you'll allow me. Whereas, Telecommunicators Week is celebrated annually in the second week of April and dedicated to the men and women who serve as public safety telecommunications. And whereas, these highly trained professionals are more than anonymous voices on the telephone line, they are dedicated and motivated people who serve the citizens of Jacksonville at some of the most critical times in their lives. And whereas, the professional public safety telecommunications is a vital link between citizens, victims, and public safety providers, their service as the unseen first responder is invaluable in emergency situations where time is critical and accuracy is vital. And whereas, the citizens of Jacksonville place their trust in these individuals, not just this week, but every day of the year. And now therefore, I, Sammy Phillips, the Mayor of the city of Jacksonville, do hereby proudly proclaim the week of April 17th through the 23rd of 2016 as Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the city of Jacksonville, and I urge all residents to join with me in recognizing the important role and responsibility that these dedicated individuals have in responding to the public safety needs within our community. Charlotte, thank you very much for what you and your crew do. Thank you. I need specific instructions. We need to be creating leaves, not circles. I'm not quite sure if I'm fine. Thank you. So as we speak, how many people are on duty right now?
Currently, four are on duty right now.
So...
So, fourteen days.
Thank you. Thank you very much for what you do.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Not only are they the public's, the ambassador to the public, but they're also the lifeline to our officers in the field. They're very dependent on our telecommunications. They have a hard job, but the telecommunications I've worked with in the past are really dedicated people, just like this group here. Thank you very much for what you do. The next item tonight is we have a public comment, a section set aside for public comment, but I don't have anyone that has signed my sheet. Is there anyone here present that wishes to speak that did not get their name on the list before it got taken up? Gail, you didn't want to say anything, did you?
She's out.
All right, counsel, now we have some minutes that we need to adopt, and also, there's a couple of consent items on the agenda for tonight, and I would entertain a motion to adopt the minutes of the April 5th, 2016 regular workshop meeting, and also the consent items.
Mayfield, move approval.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries. First item we have up here is, we're gonna go all the way down to item number three, and this is ordinance granting a franchise for fiber technologies to operate in the right-of-way. And I think Glenn Hargit is gonna present this item.
This is one of several franchises that we've been asked to perform. You might remember the most recent one that you did was for Crown Castle. We have another that's in the processing right now that'll be for another use of your right-of-way for fiber technologies. This one is a name, actually, is, of the company is Fiber Technologies. This will, they will have to have their plans approved by the engineering division before they proceed, and this gives us some control over knowing where these, where these fibers are. As you recall, these units that have been designated by the state as a public utility, we have the power to give them a franchise, but if we do not react within a reasonable time, the state then can award them a franchise. So it's in our best interest to try to negotiate and have some sort of action. We don't try to extract funds from them. What we try to do is to get them to agree that whenever they have a trench open or they have, they're running fiber conduit, that we will also put in conduit alongside that we supply to them. And the other three instances that you've given a franchise, they've agreed to do that. And in fact, in many of those cases, they've given us the conduit without us having to supply the conduit to them, which we've only had to supply the handholds for those. Now, the fiber, we're gonna blow in later as the need arrives, but some places, we've actually put the fiber in the conduit, and it's really benefited in this, around the center for public safety, having this, this option for us. So what we're asking tonight, if you do the first reading of this ordinance, then we will schedule your next regular meeting for you also to have a reading of this ordinance, and then we can issue the ordinance and they can proceed. As a footnote, most of this work for this company will be aerial. There's only a small area that'll be in conduit. So our, we are investigating whether that's gonna be a benefit for us to have it in the small area that they're actually gonna be underground.
Questions? Any questions of Mr. Hargit?
What are their, what is their business, these people?
Well, many, the first two that came in were those what's called distributed antenna systems. You might notice they were the ones that had the poles, and the antennas are on top of the poles or something like that. They're in effect, small cell sites. And so this is one where it's, the idea is instead of building big towers, they use these distributed antenna systems so they can penetrate particularly in neighborhoods where they have, you know, hotspots like John Carter's house, that they need to have antennas nearby, and they can do it much, you know, very efficient by doing it this way. This company is more connecting some sites together than it is putting in distributed antenna systems, but they have also indicated they would like to get into that market too. They're declared a public utility because actually, they can carry the signal from Sprint or Verizon or whatever. And so it's up to those companies to decide who they want to use for this distributed antenna system. It may be AT&amp;Ts coming out of the same, you know, antenna there as Sprint and such there.
Thank you. Any other questions of Mr. Hargit? All right, counsel, you're being asked to consider this first approval of the ordinance granting a franchise to operate in the right-of-way. And as the, as the issue statement says, there has to be two meeting, this has to be passed at two different council meetings, two readings. So at this time, I'd entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the first approval of the ordinance granting a franchise right to operate in the right-of-way, as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you. Agenda item number four, this is the 2016, 2017 Annual Action Plan for Community Development, and Lilly's gonna be presenting this item. Ms. Gray?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Here we go. We're here tonight to present the annual action plan for FY 1617, but I'm actually gonna defer that and allow Tracy Jackson to present this year. But what I want to do before she comes up is just to publicly recognize her for an amazing accomplishment that she's achieved. She was recently appointed to serve on the Board of Directors for our North Carolina Community Development Association, and that group is responsible for advocating on behalf of community development programs, policy, and guidelines throughout the state of North Carolina. On that board, Tracy serves as representative of some other local governments, quasi-governmental agencies, and nonprofit organizations. And I will say, this appointment did not just happen overnight. She's also served for several years on this, on the training subcommittee and was responsible for putting together our state annual, state conferences. Twice a year, we have conferences in the fall and spring. She was instrumental in making sure that we had quality trainers, quality topics, and things of that nature. So this is just an honor that I wanted to publicly recognize her for representing the city so well across the state that she was invited to serve in that capacity.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. This is our public hearing for Community Development's Annual Action Plan for Fiscal Year 1617. The purpose of our annual action plan is to give action to the five-year plan, which describes our activities, proposed outcomes, and the budget needed to implement the plan. HUD has goals to address housing needs, suitable living environments, and economic opportunities in our community. HUD also have national objectives to assist low-income households, eliminate slumming blight, and allocate resources for urgent needs such as a hurricane. HUD requires citizen participation, and we have had a community input meeting. We've had two funding opportunity workshops in which nonprofits can learn how to access federal funds. We had a review committee meeting, and currently, we are in our 30-day public comment period, which began April 3rd.
which began April the 3rd and will end May 3rd. And tonight, we have a public hearing to hear additional comments for our plan. Although funding reflects a less than 1% decrease this year, historically over the years, we still show a steady decline in our CDBG funding allocation. Our total budget is approximately $520,000, which consists of our CDBG allocation of $343,000 and program income of $177,000. While resources steadily decline, the needs of the community steadily rise, and we steadily try to address the priorities that are identified in our five-year plan. Our activities include administration, project delivery, clearance and demolition, which I'm glad to say that we have completed over 80 demos currently in this year, and next year, we hope to reach 100 demos. We also have nonprofit funding, residential rehabilitation, and affordable housing in our plan. The activities can be conducted citywide, or we can target areas such as completing our downtown housing initiative, and we can also continue strategies to improve the New River area. So our recommendation for City Council tonight is to adopt and approve our fiscal year 2016-17 annual action plan so that we may submit to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for our May 15 deadline. That concludes the presentation. Do you all have any questions?
Counsel, any questions of Ms. Jackson? Thank you, Tracy. At this time, I'm going to recess the regular council meeting and open the required public hearing in this matter to receive comments on the fiscal year 2016-17 Annual Action Plan. Is there anyone present that wishes to comment on the record? Going once, twice, close the public hearing in this matter, and reconvene the regular council meeting. Counsel, you've been asked to consider adoption of the annual action plan.
I move for adoption.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a public hearing on the budget for fiscal year 2016-17, and Dr. Richard Woodruff will be presenting this item. Dr. Woodruff.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, as required by state law, we hold a public hearing to engage the public and invite them to make comments regarding the proposed budget. Over the last several weeks, we have had information being shared with the council in workshops. We have prepared a 2017 capital improvement program, which was delivered to you in March. We've had operating budgets and workshops which cover the general fund, water and sewer fund, stormwater, and solid waste fund. By state law, you're required to adopt the budget no later than June 30th, 2016. As you see on the screen, there is a schedule that we've been following. Prior to this meeting this evening, we had a workshop, and after this meeting, we will continue with that workshop. Potential adoption of the budget could occur on May the 3rd. It could also occur on May 17th or at a future date. The revenue forecast for the FY 17 budget is shown. As you'll notice, property taxes and sales tax continue to be the primary source for the general fund with only nominal increases. You'll also notice that the overall numbers of the general fund, water and sewer fund, stormwater fees, and solid waste are shown on the screen with nominal increases. When you put together the operational budgets of all the funds, the capital projects from all the funds, and the transfers, we operate a business of almost $130 million. We take that responsibility very sincerely and very deliberately. The current tax information is the tax rate would be 64.2 cents. Four cents of that will go to council initiatives. 5.15 cents will go to the Public Safety Center. That leaves 55.05 cents to run the general government. Almost all of that goes for police and fire. In putting together the budget this year, the following assumptions were made. Number one is there would be no change in sales tax distribution. The tax rate would stay the same, meaning that there would be no property tax increase. The water and sewer rates would stay the same with no change, no increase. Solid waste fees would have no change, therefore no increase. Stormwater fees would also not increase. And the general fund balance would be used, that's our savings account, of roughly $1.6 million. We now would turn this to the public for anything they'd like to comment on the budget, any additions, any projects, any input that they'd like to give. Thank you, Mayor.
At this time, I'll recess the regular council meeting and open the public hearing on the budget. Is there anyone present that wishes to speak to this matter? If so, please indicate by raising your hand. Going once, twice. Or recess, or close the public hearing in this matter, and we'll go on to our reports, I believe. So, I'll start with Mr. Warden.
Thanks, sir. Just proud to be here.
Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, I was going to go ahead and make a report tonight. I wanted to bring the attention to the public, the latest Moody Investors report that we got of April 11th that assigned us an A3 rating, was pertinent to refinancing of 25.75 million enterprise refinancing. They were paying off some other higher-rate loans, supposed to save our, I guess, our ratepayers $2.2 million, but that was a good job. They said we were ample reserves, prudent management, stability of military bases. That was the good news. I guess the bad news was our service area wealth percentages. We're at 86.1, the national average. So while we're doing good, our citizens are a little bit below the national average. I think that's something to think about while we're doing this budget process, that everything we can save for them, they need it. But it is a good, a good feeling to have a good credit rating, ample reserves, and to save money on financing. So thanks again to the Finance Department and everybody's job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Willingham?
I just wanted to commend the responsible persons for the historical display at the entrance. It's a very good job of presenting our history and the interaction with Camp Lejeune Marine Corps Base. So thanks to whomever did that. Nothing further.
Mayor, Camp Lejeune.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of reports. First of all, in front of you, I'll give you a quick update on MPO work. We had approximately $40 million in additional highway investment, and I've given you some information. Some of the projects include Commerce Drive Extension, Henderson Drive widening, the Henderson Drive Extension all the way through, North Carolina 111 widening to the airport, and a couple accelerated projects are the Blue Creek Road and Ridge Road realignment on US 258, improvements that, that are needed there, and the Jacksonville Multimodal Center. As I said, in front of you, I've also given you a Camp Lejeune rail feasibility study, which we've been working with Camp Lejeune and NC DOT to evaluate options for utilizing the existing Camp Lejeune rail line for commercial purposes. A draft is, a draft of the study is at your table for your review. Again, this is ongoing work by the MPO to enhance this opportunity. Also, Highway 17 Association is meeting next Tuesday at 10:00 a.m. here in Jacksonville at our City Hall. They're having their quarterly meeting here. We encourage anyone that would like to attend to please do so. We'll have representatives here from all over eastern North Carolina. They'll be in attendance, and any council member that has the time to attend, please stop by. When you look at this map, it's a well, well put together map, again, giving credit to our Anthony Prince and his staff, because this is, this is very good. Basically, the map just outlines all the projects within our, within our community. It's through 2025, and if you look on the backside, it goes through and identifies the TIP project, which has the numbers associated, what it is, the limits of the project, the description, and sort of the year models, but then you could flip back over and sort of see exactly what project that is. So it's easy to read, well laid out, and also located on the MPO website for those that are listening today to keep up with what's going on here in Jacksonville. And again, I know I've said it before, and I think it's important to say it again, Anthony and his team and, and, and that whole department has done just an absolutely amazing job for the city of Jacksonville and what we've been able to, to provide to our citizens in terms of projects. We've been one of the major recipients of funding in, in the last several years, and I think that's a testament of their hard work. They know what's going on. They know about DOT projects, and again, I'll let, you have anything to add, Bob, to that?
Just the only thing I'd add is not just the Metropolitan Planning Organization is our local transportation board, and we don't just look at, look at Jacksonville, we also are looking at pretty much the whole county, most of the counties in the MPO, so. So the county, county residents also benefit too, so.
Thank you. Let's see here, TDA, Sports Development Authority is continuing its studies on, on methods of driving overnight stays. Tourism Promotion Fund, we're in the process of receiving applicants for funding for activities that, that will drive heads on beds, and we're also looking to create opportunities that would focus on military reunions, providing projects that would create additional sporting events, and to continue to drive overnight stays, and obviously programs that would also enhance visitor experience while they're here in Jacksonville. As most of you may have attended the Art Block last weekend on Saturday, what a great event. It was a, a, Mayor, you, you kicked us off, very well attended, it continues to grow, and I'll tell you, art, art is huge in the state of North Carolina. Music and arts are continuing to grow, and there's a lot of municipalities that are investing significant amounts of dollars to grow those efforts. And we're, we're behind the curve, but we're making some strides, and Saturday is a testament of what that can be. And Mayor, I'll let you finish up on that. So, thank you.
Thank you. That was a very good turnout, just chalk up another great event on, in downtown Jacksonville on New Bridge Street this past Saturday. I know the also, the Jacksonville also Council on Arts put this together. They have a new, they have a new leader, Cindy Edwards is leading that organization now, and she has a lot of good plans and ideas as far as bringing a little culture to our community, which, you know, is a good thing. I know that they've done some other things in the past, but she's looking at exploring other, other ideas that will bring other, you know, bring people downtown and, you know, give us an opportunity to show off our community. And with that, I would turn to you, Dr. Woodruff.
Members of council, Ms. Washington's not here this evening, but she asked if I would give the report on the Environmental and Appearance Advisory Committee activities. The 32nd, I'm sorry, the 36th Award of the Tree City USA for Arbor Day Foundation will occur on Friday, April the 29th, at 9:30 a.m. at Clyde Irwin School. We would encourage the public to come out. There will be a tree planting, and again, that is going to be on Friday, April 29th, 9:30 a.m. at Clyde Irwin. Also, would remind the public of our citywide efforts for cleanup. We would also remind the public, please use the horticultural bags that you can buy at any of your local stores such as Lowe's, or Ace Hardware, or Home Depot, that are biodegradable. Please do not put your yard trippings, clippings, rather, in the, in the, in the black bags. Please use the biodegradable ones. Also, would remind you that special pickups are available, so that if you have a large volume of waste and you'd like to have it picked up, you can call the sanitation department, or you can go on the city's website. Mayor, this past week, we were very pleased that the members of the media department attended in Chapel Hill the, the North Carolina City and County Communicators Meeting. This was, at that meeting, the city received the Excellence in Communication Awards. This was for a video produced by Kevin Raupel, and it created information for the citizens relative to sanitation. I'm sure you have seen it. The video is called "We'll Take It." It won praise of the judges. The judges were from Texas, Colorado, and Florida, and the judges felt that there was good use of humor and graphics to clearly give the message of what the sanitation division would pick up and how to get it out to pick it up. But again, would commend the entire department and specifically Kevin for that award. Two other things that we would like to mention is even though we're about halfway through April, Jacksonville Jamboree will occur at the Commons on the 7th of May, that's a Saturday. We would encourage the public to come out. Would remind you that the mayor and council provide fundings for this totally free event. There'll be rides and everything there for your children. We hope you'll come out and enjoy the music. The only thing you'll have to pay for is any food you decide to purchase. There's no entry fee, there's no fee for the children to ride rides. And then the last thing that we would like to mention is the tremendous progress which the city staff, working with community development, on the Georgetown Park. I had the opportunity today at lunchtime to go over to Georgetown Park. The walking trail is approximately one quarter of a mile. It is not necessarily a track, although it's eight feet wide, but it does serpentine throughout the area, including a very nice shaded session. There will be new playground equipment installed within the next 30 days, and as of yesterday, we installed eight of the nine exercise pieces. So if you'd like to come out and walk, there are pieces where you can do upper body exercises, lower body exercises, sit-ups. You can watch your wife stand on a platform and jump up and down if you'd like to, because that platform is there too. But again, through the cooperation of the community development funds, the cooperation of the engineering department and Parks and Recreation, the mayor and council were able to bring this very positive recreation and fitness opportunity to our public. We hope you will go out and use those. That concludes the report. Thank you for what you do for this city, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Mr. Carter, you have anything to add?
No report.
With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.